Time is now 7:30. I call this meeting in the Arley Borough Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin this evening with our roll call.
Ms. Thompson, present. Mr. Brea?
Present.
Mr. Finer?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Siebelmeyer?
Here.
Mr. McCann? And Mr. Curtin?
Thank you. With five members present, that constitutes a quorum. I will note that Mr. Curtin informed us he would not be joining today. Mr. McCann should be joining 15 to 20 minutes late, so we expect his arrival later. Before we move on to community announcements, I just want to quickly recognize that we did make an amendment to our agenda that went out this morning. The business item we removed was a vote regarding, sorry, hearing board appeal. That will appear on agenda for discussion and possible vote at the first meeting in August. The reason for the delay was to give our solicitor appropriate time to take a look at the opinion and provide legal advice on that. We will be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss that subject. Of course, public comments are always welcome on any topic, so if I see a number here that are probably hoping to comment on that, you are certainly welcome to do so during public comment. First item is community announcements. If any from council or the mayor have an announcement to share, I'll extend the same offer to the public. Hearing none, we'll move right into public comment. This is the portion of the meeting during which residents may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you will be given an opportunity to do so during council's deliberation of that business item. Members of the public are asked to please stand, I'm sorry, and come to the front microphone for our sound system and to state your name and address for the record before your comments, which we ask you keep two, three minutes in length. So with that, I will open the floor. Does anyone like to acknowledge your public comment? Start with Commander Smith.
I'm Ted Smith. I'm Ted Smith, live at 114 in Arley Commons. Council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak here. As I said, my name is Ted Smith. I am the commander of Gole's Doyle American Legion Post 317 located here in Arley Borough. I have been asked by my post members, which included 343 veterans and a total membership of almost 700, to speak to you regarding the use of the flag pool that is located in front of Borough Hall. And I'd like to take this, take just a moment to share with you some brief history. The flag pool was purchased by the Sons of the American Legion Unit 317. The unit also paid for original installation and currently maintains the responsibility for immediate maintenance. The unit is also responsible for putting up, maintaining, and taking down the American flags that fly yearly from May through November. The flag pool is installed for the sole purpose to honor and show respect to those individuals named on the World War II monument, which is located next to the flag hall. And was designed to carry only one flag. The flag pool does not even fly the QWMA flag. This monument honors those individuals that served our country and sadly made the ultimate sacrifice. Those heroes never returned to the town of which they were members of. In keeping with the original intent of this pool and monument, I am here to ask you to pass a resolution that moving forward would permit only the American flag to be flown on this dedicated flag pole. Please be sure that the Sons of the American Legion, the Legion, and the Auxiliary Units as members of this community not only support or honor veterans, but also their families, our community members, and the children of this community. We also fully encourage and defend everyone's right to fly, to fly the flag of the organization or the cause that represents their beliefs and convictions. We kindly ask moving forward that organizations consider using the Borough Flag Pool, don't pay it, but the park, but it flagged to be flown. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment tonight? Yes?
I'm confused. Can we talk about the taproom now, or is that mayor?
Yes, we'll have a comment here, but now is the appropriate time.
Good evening, councilmembers. Albert Salini from 18 Van Horn. It's good to see you tonight. My comments are not regarding taproom. You'll have the transparency for that at our next meeting, but I'd just like to get the council's readout briefing potentially from the Borough Engineer on the status of potential fines that were voted out at the last meeting for ML-7 for the environmental remediation violations that were levied against it. And I'd also like the council's briefing to us of status, to me and other citizens, about the accuracy of the plan as submitted and the timeline by which it will be acted. Because each evening as we have thunderstorms and significant 100-year rain events, there is, you know, damage that is ensuing into our borough. So I was hoping if we can just get a brief commentary from Borough Engineer or the council on those matters.
Thank you. It's now on agenda tonight, right? So I think maybe now if you just have a quick, quick summary.
Sure. At the last council meeting, we received permission to move forward with citations if ML-7 did not provide the submissions that they were supposed to. They did. They submitted to us, they submitted to Bucks County Conservation District, they got approval from the Conservation District. We are wrapping up our review right now. And then the Conservation District required a preconstruction payment before any remediation can start. So that's supposed to happen next week, and then they will start the remediation. We did have some comments about their plan, and we are finalizing that this weekend we'll be issuing our review after we go over with the solicitor. I'm going to be scheduling a meeting with Andrew to look at it before we issue it. And then, once we give them approval to move forward, they will provide us with a formal schedule of when everything's going to happen, including when they're going to address the plantings that are going to occur in fact today, physically.
Thank you, Liz. Follow-up question. Will there be transparency to impacted property owners for the accuracy of the plan and the sufficiency of remediation?
Yes, your representation for us will be CC'd on our issuance of our review letter of their submissions. We'll be able to give that to all of you.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Rozowski.
Hi, I'm Paul Rozowski from 106 South Main Street, and I'm not going to talk long because we homeowners, we've made our complaints about granting the variance for the taproom. But I just want to point out that according to one of the town ordinances for granting variances, it states both the municipality's planning code and the ordinance required the applicant to demonstrate that the requested variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare. Well, having this wood smoker on site is a big change to our welfare. This wood burning smoker will release thousands and thousands of pounds of carbon dioxide into the air over our neighborhood. According to Families for Clean Air, EPA researchers estimate the lifetime cancer risk from wood smoke to be 12 times greater than that from the similar amount of cigarette smoke. We will be smelling the wood burning hazardous smoke for 48 hours a week. At least, they said 48 hours a week. The schoolchildren in the school are right next door, and they have the outside playground right next door. They will be right next door to this smoker, and they smoke in this carbon dioxide. Variances are granted for hardships. Jim created his own hardship by creating a bar in an area not zoned for bars. You can't tell me it's a tasting room. It's not a tasting room. And now he wants a kitchen in an area not zoned for kitchens. We feel that when we went up against the zoning board, that the zoning board made a quick 15-minute decision on all the complaints and the 37 homeowners who live in the immediate area who signed a petition against granting this variance. In a time of climate change, heat waves, catastrophic fires, and flooding, why would Yardley add to the pollution of our own air quality by adding another smoker? In Canada, right now, they're trying to outlaw wood smokers. That's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be adding smokers. We actually should be taking them away. You know, we all elected you to protect us and watch over the town. And my wife and I want to thank you all for serving on council and as solicitor. But this has become a heated argument, and it's pitted neighbor against neighbor. Now, since 37 homeowners signed a petition saying they don't want this variance, 37 homeowners in the immediate area, 37 homeowners signed a petition, and since the council opposed this variance in May, I think we might appeal the ruling that the zoning board made and let a third party, a neutral party, make a decision, and then we live by that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back.
I'm Scott Ernie, 47 South Main. I just wanted to address the smoker issue because it's come up a bunch of times. It's a gas-fired smoker that we're looking at, the largest one. Over a 12-hour period, so the heat comes from the gas, a natural gas burning stove like anyone else has in their house. Over a 12-hour period, two to three sticks, split pieces of wood provide the smoker. So it's less, you know, weak than a fire pit would have in two hours. So, and that's for the largest smoker we could possibly use up there. So I have the biggest model we possibly could use. It won't be this big because this could fit 80 briskets. So, put the size in order, but it's not the smoker the way the smoker at Red House was a smoker. It's a gas, gas stove oven with smoking as a flavor. So, and that's what commercial smokers generally are. So, I just wanted to rebut the smoker issue.
Thank you. Other public comment? Ms. Taylor.
Susan Taylor, 3rd problem of the day. Overall, regarding the recent issue of the taproom, I would hope in this interim, before the next meeting, that everyone can focus in on the larger issues of proper zoning practices and community planning. Because this is an issue of just whether the taprooms have a restaurant. It's what happens to that larger property, and it's how what happens on that larger property affects the downtown Yardley. That, to me, is the very important one. There are a lot of smaller issues, but what happens to the town is pretty important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, before Ms. Taylor, I think we should just take a moment to recognize her recent accolades as, and thank you for being in the canal service, so thank you very much.
But you should all be happy because that action brings you all the money that the city depends on the Delaware Canal and Mary Yardley footbridge.
That we can clap for.
So you'll be getting that check soon.
Thank you for that recommendation to me, yeah. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And in all seriousness, thank you Mayor Harding for recognizing the work that Ms. Taylor has done for our community and for all that have the pleasure of living anywhere near the Delaware Canal. So thank you. All right, we have other public comment going once. All right?
I have a handout. I'd like to say that Councilman McCann brought up the fact that I shouldn't have put a hand out last time because we hadn't had the written decision, so I agree with you. You can remove that from the minutes and replace it with this one. I'll email you it, Yori.
Thank you. I think you did email me.
This is, this is the updated version.
Okay, sounds good.
After the decision came out. Okay, I, since I brought up the taproom last time, and I thought this was going to be an agenda item, I had done a write-to-know request, and the written decision came in. I'm not going to go over everything I had before. I would like to reiterate that the zoning hearing board abused its discretion. There was no hardship established, so I think that's probably the primary argument. But I think a really important one is that I found the original application for the zoning permit and the original email from Jim Kane to Mike Italia describing exactly what the use was going to be. On the, this accessory use never, ever included a public cafe or restaurant. In fact, on, on page, the second page of the zoning permit, it specifically says, "The cafe will be open weekdays to the tannery tenants only, and the taproom will be open evenings and weekends to the general public." So that's why it wasn't assessed for use. There was never permission for a restaurant to be serving the general public. The other thing in the email from Jim Kane, this is dated March 24, 2019, this is what Mike Italia approved. The plan is to open a cafe in the lower portion of the building, lease, and offer food and coffee from our retail businesses to the tannery companies exclusively. The food was exclusive to the tannery companies. That's why all three zoning officers agreed to it being accessory use. It was never open to the general public. Again, we will open the space to the general public on weekends as a tasting room, a tasting room for the beer, not a bar with full-bar service. So, two, that was on March 24. That is what Mike Italia responded to, and that is what he approved. He did not approve a restaurant. This is not an expansion of a culinary kitchen. It's not an expansion of a kitchen. That was the accessory use. Then I have the notes from David Brea, and the councilperson's David Brea and Caroline Thompson. This is from the tannery taproom listening session. When we didn't have the council, it was nice of you to write up these notes. It was always limited to 40 people. Nobody seems to know where the 49 number came from. But in these question and answers, the one I want to focus on is number 14. Who will enforce the 49 people limit on capacity in the building? Will it be code enforcement? Yes, code enforcement. Is there a plan in place for enforcement of 49 seats? The business will be treated the same as all other Yardley businesses, which are also governed by their own occupancy limits? Code enforcement is based on a complaint-response system. What will happen if they are found to be in violation of the capacity limit? We're looking into this further. There is likely a fine warning system. So this opened up in 2019 and has been operating in violation of Yardley Borough ordinances from the moment it opened up. There have been several complaints by a number of different people to the Borough Manager, to code enforcement. There has never been a citation until the recent 200 or how many hundreds of people were there. So, my concern, and this is for Yori, the Councilman Finer, because you keep saying that it's okay because code enforcement, everything should be left to enforcement. But we don't really have enforcement work. And, and councilwoman Brea, with all due respect, I really mean this, please try to set aside the anger that you may have for things I say. But when I bring up the lack of code enforcement, you have to really wonder why this has never been enforced. I mean, this is the kind of thing that makes residents wonder why one business is allowed to operate so blatantly, making them operate with all the ordinances that we have, while others obviously have to adhere to everything. So, I don't think we should be rewarding businesses that have violated ordinances because it's like saying, okay, well, get away with it, and as long as we can get away with it, and then we can try to demonstrate that it's a good thing and bring in all peoples that, you know, from other places that think it's a good thing, then you're kind of rubber-stamping something that's, that's been illegal. So, I don't think we should be rewarding bad behavior in somebody who's been operating in bad faith from day one. I think that we should appeal this hearing. I think the zoning hearing board was abusing their discretion. They didn't listen to the majority of the residents. They didn't factor in improper notice, and the whole slot side is usually...
Miss Prime Minister, unfortunately, I'm going to have to call time on the comment word about six minutes or so now.
Oh, okay.
But we do have the written for the record. I do ask everyone to review it, and as mentioned before, this will in all likelihood be an agenda item. It will certainly be an agenda item at the next council meeting, whether or not there is a motion that carries remains to be seen.
Okay.
Thank you. Did I see more comment in the back? Yes, I can't see who it is, but come to the front.
(Inaudible) Morgan Avenue. I'm not here because of the taproom. I'm here for another reason, but...
You know, if you could just take a seat, the mic has a hard time.
I have to speak up about this scenario that you're speaking about. In 2000, everybody tries to grow their business, so they say they're going to do this in 1900 or 2021, okay? I don't live right around the corner, so I can feel...
Excuse, sorry, just, I know it's awkward, but the mic so that the people online can hear.
I understand if you live nearby and music, and I get that. But, the day there was that many people there, there was a reason there were that many people. There were a friend of ours passed away, there was not an event after the funeral. That's not an everyday occurrence that that happened. That was a very isolated occurrence. And I just feel like certain members of the borough harass people in their head, and these poor people are just trying to grow their business. And, and I feel bad for the people that live nearby, so maybe you just like curtail the music at a certain hour, but like not to let somebody grow their business, you know, something that happened in 2019, you know, I just feel like, what are you supposed to put police at every door at every business to make sure that they're 40 people, not 49 or whatever? Like, who's going to enforce that? I don't know how you could be asked to enforce something of that nature and enforce every business and how many people are in there to do this. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
(Inaudible) for the American Legion, if they wanted to talk to a councilperson or if a councilperson wanted to talk to them to follow their request, who should they reach out to best after this meeting? Who would be the best liaison?
I don't know if we have an exact liaison structure set up. I mean, all of our email addresses are on the website.
Would it be a committee they would go to, or...
For something of that nature, I don't think so. I mean, probably maybe community outreach.
Okay, and who would that be?
Could take lead.
Yori and Mike Soft.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep. And of course, when in doubt, getting in touch with Paula, and she can refer to wherever it belongs.
Thank you.
All right, one more offer. Any final public comments before we move on with the rest of the agenda? Going once, going twice, and with that, we will consider a public comment closed. Next item is consideration of the consent agenda dated for tonight, July 20. We've only got two items on there. That's approval of the bills list for tonight and approval of the minutes from our July 6 meeting. Would any member of council like for these items to be considered separately? All right, hearing for consent, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion is made by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Ross. Any questions, comments, discussion from council? Any from the public? Miss Prime Minister?
I just have a question on the bills list. There was a check, check number 19, 192, no invoice, for Armour and Sons Electric, $250. This is one of a number of checks now for Armour and Sons Electric that are totaling almost $25,000. Again, I, I'm still concerned if any of the money was recovered from the contractor or the property owner who's back who ran over the conduit. I did a write-to-know request, I was told to wait till I got it back. There was nothing in there about this. So again, I mean, I don't know why these Armour and Sons electric bills are so high. I don't know if we recovered the money from that particular incident and if we're, and if we are alive or not. It just seems really a lot for that amount. I don't know what it represents.
Thank you. Do we have detail on, I know it's in one...
(Inaudible).
Okay. And I know that Armour and Sons does perform a good deal of work, streetlights and the like. You know, in regards to the insurance recovery, we've talked about this more times than I particularly care to again, but the determination was that when you look at the nature of the claim, which is one where the party performing the work had all the appropriate permitting, right, there was just something there that wasn't marked, which is a thing that happens in, in anything in life, in towns and construction projects from time to time. But also, when looking at the deductible on the insurance plan combined with what you can expect rates to go up by when you make a claim versus what we stood to recover, it didn't really make sense, right? That sort of is a thing that we're all familiar with in terms of you get an offender banner, if you have a $500 deductible, is it worth filing a claim for $750? Probably not. And this fell sort of dollars and cents wise into that category. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? All in favor, please signify by, we already have a motion, I'm sorry. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing the motion carries, we're six to zero now. Next item is report from our chief of police.
Thank you.
Take it away. We have a stand-in tonight.
Yes, Sergeant Colton, thank you, Mr. President. Chief is currently on vacation, as you know, so sitting in his basement for tonight's meeting. You should have in front of you, Mr. President, and councilpeople, and mayor, Resolution Number 2104, which states, "Support of Senate Bill 535 and House Bill 606, which will enable all municipal police to use the same motor vehicle speed timing equipment as the Pennsylvania State Police." In short, what we're looking forward is this 28th day of July, 2021, at the council in Borough of Yardley, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, calls upon members of House Representatives of the Central Pennsylvania, and specifically Representative Perry Warren, to support House Bill 606, which will enable all municipal police to use the same motor vehicle speed timing equipment as the Pennsylvania State Police.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
All right, made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any questions discussing from council on this item? And just by... And just by...
I've seen this version that's come by several times, but just wonder, is there any belief, if there's any possibility that it's actually happening this time, or is the cause of the following vague?
You know, I'm not sure what, where the legislature stands in terms of a whip count on votes. Yeah, I know that it gets closer and closer every time, so I think the hope is that one of these years we'll finally get it through. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is something in other states that local police are able to use radar, and Pennsylvania is just sort of in its own little world when it comes to this one. So I think the hope is that instead of timing people between those nice little lines on North Main Street, we'd be able to do it like the rest of the pros out there.
Yeah. And actually, with the, if anyone's ever sat with the yardly borough police and tried to actually see what they have to go through to check speed, it's difficult and dangerous for them to do it. So I hope that it happens, but I just, you know, I guess we can't control what happens in the neighborhood.
So to that end, in support of this, I know a resolution is great, but Chief Kelly also said if we, council members would be willing, Mayor Harding, to send a more personalized email or even a phone call to Perry Warren. Chief Kelly sent along some language we can use in an email or as talking points on the phone. So I'm just about done drafting up kind of a letter that I'm sending, and I'll share it with Albi, but I would ask you to please do that if this, whether or not this resolution passes, if you support this. I think every little bit helps make a big stack of papers on his desk, maybe.
You have a great idea, and I'll do that, too. Hopefully, we'll all do that.
Yes, actually, our engineer made a very good comment there, which is that representatives do count phone calls in favor or opposed of certain bills, so it's not just a council issue. If members of the public support this measure, as I said, those metrics all matter when it comes to what's going to get a vote up or down. Any further discussion on this item from either council or the public? Hearing none. I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Resolution carries, six to zero. Thank you. All right. Next item is manager's report. Manager Dotson.
The municipal trash cans have arrived, so I expect them to be installed any time soon, within the next couple of weeks. The borough didn't receive our half of our, any of our VA funds. We are in the process of starting a whole new bank account just for that, just to keep it clean and tracked well. We had a meeting with ScanTech, who gave us an estimate to digitize all of our building files, and the proposal came back pretty good, so we're going to be discussing that in the near future. FCD Media sent a preliminary website, which I sent to everybody, and I'm looking for feedback on that, which I think it looks pretty good. It's clean, it's easy to look at, and then we have two items to act on, and I'm going to roll that to Ms.
Let's pause there for a second. Any questions on the report from council? All right, Natalie.
All right, so the first action item is to approve the proposals that RBE prepared for the design services associated with the three FEMA grants that we were awarded. But can you give me the motion for each proposal?
It's, what is it, your proposal for...
So we did three separate proposals, was it three separate grants?
Yeah, I think you did.
Okay, all right. So the first proposal is for 93 North Delaware, for $14,942. And for just general reference, the grant approval was to keep engineering design costs under $15,000, so we are quite good.
All right, motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson to approve Rivington Burnet Engineers' proposal for 93 North Delaware Avenue's elevation project in the amount of $14,942. Is there any comments, questions, concerns from council? Any from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, six to zero.
The next proposal is for the group of eight house elevations for $79,996.
Motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson for the proposal regarding eight home elevations in the amount of $79,996 from Remington Burnet Engineers.
Can we just read those, since they're on the record and with that?
Sure. The homes this pertains to are 33 Brown Street, 46 Brown Street, 77 Morgan Avenue, 106-110 Morgan Avenue, I think that's a double, same for 112-114 Morgan Avenue, 25 North Delaware Avenue, 45 South Delaware Avenue, 81 North Delaware Avenue, and 93 North Delaware Avenue.
93 should be in that list.
Striking 93 from that list. Good catch. All right. Any comments, questions, concerns from council? Anything from the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries, six to zero.
And then the last proposal is for 33 North Delaware, mitigation reconstruction, and a total of $4,986.
Motion made, again by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson for the Remington Burnet Engineers' proposal at 33 North Delaware Avenue for an elevation project in the amount of, I lost it, $4,986. Any deliberation from council? From the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I heard him. Any opposed? Any extensions? Also carries, six to zero.
And then the last action item we have is to approve the resolution in support of our DCD MTF grant for Phase 3, the other one, the SAGRA project that's due at the end of the month. And that is for a total of $573,689, and there is no match for this particular grant.
Motion made by Mr. Ross, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any deliberations, questions from council on this one? Anything from the public? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries, six to zero, with a little bonus point from Mr. Finer on that one.
And that is it, it's all...
All right. Anything else under manager's report?
No, sir.
All right, let's close that out and go down the line to Mr. Klosser for a solicitor's report.
I have no report this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Just real quick, out of the efforts of the borough manager today, I had the opportunity to speak with a representative from Cadence Corner, a very tragic reason for an organization being involved, but before we meet next time, they will be hosting their third annual golf outing in Yardley, so just please keep them in your thoughts over the next week.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to council members' reports. Mr. Curtin's not with us tonight, so we'll move right to Mr. Ross.
Public Works tonight with the sidewalk, everything is moving on well. We're hoping to get our HOP in the next two to three weeks, and then we can send out a bid and get construction going sometime beginning to mid-temper. With the Mary Yardley Bridge, we got all our checks knocked off for that, so we submitted for all our final permit, which will probably be around 30 days, but since everything looks good going to receive a permit, it's just a waiting game. The next meeting, we're going to have a motion to send out the bridge project for bid, so we can kind of get those two things going concurrently. So I expect to see that resolution at the next meeting. And then we did a walkthrough for ML7 after the Public Works meeting, just to see the progress of that and just, you know, go over the plans and see how that's going, so that's moving along well.
Thank you for your update. Any questions there? All right, we'll move on to Ms. Segal Morris.
No report this evening.
All right, I have no report, so we'll move to Ms. Thompson.
So I have a discussion item with regard to the line of credit that we'll get to later. General Government discussed, just looked over the Q2 mid-year book numbers for our budget, that was just closed. They're looking good, but we're doing well this year, so no red flags there. Nothing else to report.
It's a good thing in these times. Mr. McCann.
No report, but I'll just mention, I want to thank the members of the American Legion United, for your service and certainly the correspondence. I'm a history teacher, and certainly learning about some of the history of the monument and the flagpole was informative, so thank you so much, Rob.
Thank you. Mr. Finer, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do have something on behalf of David Applebaum, the chair of the Jersey Yardley, but he's there, and I want to invite him to announce it. Is he there?
He is there.
Okay, so better than his own mouth, mine.
Okay, I just got put on the spot.
You couldn't.
Ah, jeez. She'll send me back. Okay, David Applebaum, 39 Grease Drive, representing experience Yardley. Music on May is fully booked. We have six musical acts that will be performing every Saturday between July 31 through September 4. We have a myriad of different types of music, representing everything from Latin music to Zydeco to blues music. One of the performers actually is on the Billboard charts right now, is somewhere between first and 20. So the kind of acts and the kind of value that we bring to Yardley is, I think, very high, and I want to appreciate all the support that we get from council and the borough staff. What Yori is referring to is that in my sleep, I invented a new project, temporarily. The working title is Mini Music Festival Under the Pavilion. So we're pulling a permit for August 21. The only band booked so far is the Philadelphia Saxophone Orchestra. Yes, I did say Philadelphia Saxophone Orchestra. But the idea is either to invite a couple other acts to perform prior to Music on May and/or maybe pull a permit for another day for a couple other acts that are interested in doing the same thing. So essentially, what I'm looking for, and the permit will detail, is after the farmers' market closes, between that time and the time that Music on May starts. I have already sat down with Paula West and the chief to discuss the logistics, and I think that we were in agreement, but I'll wait till I call the permit and we can sit down and review everything. But everything being equal, that's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to that project as it progresses. Mr. Finer, anything else on your report?
I just want to appreciate those folks that are in Jersey Yardley and are volunteers that do all this stuff. If they don't get how we pay the way we do on council.
Yes, we get half as much.
That's right. All right, that closes out council member reports. We have nothing under discussion items, so let's jump right to other business, which is, Ms. Thompson, for discussion of the line of credit.
Sure, so as you all remember, we opened a line of credit withdrawal down system. When did this, that was like last year, last August?
Last year, yeah.
At 1.7%, awesome rate. We approved up to $500,000. It closes in three weeks. We don't need $500,000, but we do hope to use it to help with cash flow with some of the, some of the projects that are all going to be coming in at the same time in September. We're going to have a lot going on in the borough. So I would like to propose, we've already drawn $50,000, I would like to propose that we draw an additional $200,000 from the line of credit. The repayment plan is well within our budget. There will be no issues there. So the projects to be covered with that money would be potential purchase of the Pico lot at $55,000. The Mary Yardley Bridge, we have $80,000 gap there to fund, and the final would be $115,000 towards the phase, next phase of the sidewalk to help with the match grant that we already received there. So those numbers total $250,000, and I am looking for input, and if council desires a motion to proceed with that, I guess I'll make that motion.
All right, so let me just make sure we have the numbers right. It's motion for an additional $200,000 draw.
Yep.
$55,000 is allocated to the Pico lot. Mary Yardley Bridge is 80, and Phase 2 of the sidewalk, the allocation is 115.
Correct. Which is actually lower than what we will need for that, but we can make it up elsewhere in the budget.
All right. And those numbers total, an additional $200,000 draw. Motion from Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCann. Any deliberation or discussion from council?
I just want to say that I applaud the General Government Committee for thinking ahead and getting the line of credit, because this is how it's done. The line of credit is extremely well entrenched, allowing us to be a larger council project to deal with the cash flow. And when you look at the fact that we've been getting, we've been getting a whole bunch of grants, and thank you also to Liz and Matt Ross for, for Tom Kent, for, just, you know, the whole scene is working. So I totally support these smart moves, sound physical management, and I appreciate the work he's doing.
Yeah, just for full transparency, we have our last payment on the last sidewalk lock loan due next year, and there will, the first payment on this loan would be due next year, but it's under $10,000, so a nominal repayment there. So part, almost no overlap between the two loans, so essentially, this repayment would replace, actually will be lower, but will replace the repayment we're currently making on the first sidewalk loan. So that's where it's coming from in the budget.
Right, this checks a lot of boxes, allows us to handle these capital projects where we have a lot of invoices coming due at the same time. As Ms. Thompson just mentioned, our annual debt service will actually go down because this is a lower draw than the previous loan that we will be retiring next year. And then, of course, in addition to that, we're seeing that funding come in from the rescue plan, which we're still trying to figure out exactly how that's going to change the borough's cash flow, but it's going to help the bottom line, so we don't expect any issues as it regards to cash flow when it comes to repayment or financing, other projects, normal operations. Everything is very much in the clear. Any further comments from council before I turn it over to the public? I see public comment in the back, so come to the front.
Good evening, and thank you, Al Trillene again. Congratulations on getting line, it makes sense, cash flow. I'm a banker, so I, but I just had a question. Is there any unusual covenants, restrictive covenants, or collateralization requirements that haven't been shared with the council, or I'm not sure. So it's secured by the general indenture from tax revenues in the acting covenants?
Fuckin' Kent, yeah.
Act 72, right?
It's just a general obligation under the borough, so it's backed obviously by the taxing.
Okay, and in covenants, are you comfortable with all the covenants?
There weren't any.
No? Great. What institution did you have?
First National Bank of Newtown.
We like to deal locally.
Yeah.
It was a good deal when it came, so...
It sounds like it. I'm just curious, did him thank for the transparency?
Sure, thanks for asking.
Thank you. Any other public comment regarding the draw? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries, six to zero. All right, so unless there is any other business that a member wishes to bring before council tonight, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. Sorry, our public comment is passed. Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There will not be a vote following. Thank you.
Council President, do you need Sergeant Golden to stay?
We do not.
Are you sure you don't want to beg?